Okay, I'd like to say welcome to both boards, to our joint meeting for April 26th. I would like to call this meeting to order. And we will begin with approval of the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda?
Sir.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Also, call our Board of County Commissioners to order.
Okay. We will begin with the proposed 2018-19 budget discussion with Dr. Hulman here.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be with you this evening. Thank you to the, to our Board of Education and our Board of County Commissioners for the invitation to come together this evening. We're pleased to present to you, as it stands today, our, slowly but surely getting to our final recommended version of our budget proposal for next year. I personally want to thank our team and the county staff who have worked with us throughout the entire year. We continue to have a very good working relationship, board to board and, and team to team. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Here's kind of the agenda we filed, and we really want to leave enough time for a lot of questions or comments or feedback from, from both groups, but we want to go through, let the Board of County Commissioners know what our budget development process has been, what our data trends look like, our local and state funding assumptions, and then really some areas that we believe we need to focus hard on for next year in terms of priorities. We have provided a series of handouts for you, including the, this PowerPoint presentation and a full copy, copy of our five-year capital improvement. This has been our development process, both in terms of central services and with our Board of Education timeline. We have taken a lot of time to meet department by department to really dig into not just how we're spending our funding, but the return on investment, where we might redirect funds to fund priorities of the school system. Right now, we are looking and still aiming for a May 1st, next Tuesday, Board of Education approved budget, and then we want to get it to the county no later than, I believe we said, I don't know if it's on there.
May 7.
May 7. That is our plan is to get it to you well in advance of when you need it for review. And we, we met that advanced deadline last year, and we plan to meet that again this year. Here are some of our budget trends. I'm not going to go, and then we'll go line by line, but basically what you see here is over the course of the past decade or so, our funding has been increasing both at the state, federal, county operating, and county capital. You'll see here in the, the green is our county operating appropriation and, and the purple is the county capital budget. We have seen an increase in our retirement contribution over the past few years. We have an aging workforce, and we have more of our individuals that are retiring, and I can't remember the percentage of them, Mr. Covington, but you'll see here, we are projecting for 2019 another increase in our retirement employee, employee, employer contribution. The same is the same trend with employee health insurance premiums. We are seeing an increase on these premiums over time and expecting to see another increase for next year. We're also seeing an increase in charter enrollment, and we are really working hard to ensure that all of our families in the county know about the great things that we're offering in Union County Public Schools, but we have more charter schools opening in this county, and we've had more families choosing to go to charter schools. We are projecting another increase next year in this area. We, we have seen a drastic increase since about the 2014-15 school year, and again, we're working hard to get these families to come back to our schools. And this is a reminder, this board knows, when you talk about our county budget, the funding we get is for charter and the school system's kids. We're funded because you all, as the Board of County Commissioners, fund Union County This is another way to look at it in terms of the, the sharp increase that we have seen over time. Since 2015, about $3.7 million have gone to our charter school allocation compared to this current year, about 7.4. Again, we are the pass-through for charter schools. State budget assumptions, we know that with the, the General Assembly and their new modified version of the K-3 class size reduction, that reduction will remain the same as the current year for next year. We are expecting a new allotment for enrichment teachers or enhancement teachers at a, a new ratio that the General Assembly has set. We do expect our certified staff principals and assistant principals to have a salary increase. We do expect the same or similar type of salary increase for our other employees, and again, I've talked about health insurance costs and premiums going up. And then local budget, we're making some assumptions that the Board of County Commissioners will, will fund our state mandated increases at the local level, that our tax rate will remain the same, and as I'm going to talk about in a minute, we are going to make safety and security a significant priority for the next school year. There are three main, as it stands right now, primary priorities from the administration. The first one is safety and security, and the second one is really investment in our own employees, and then the third category is this idea of continuing to improve our organization and identifying gaps in our school system that we might need to plug in so that we can provide better resources for our children. When it comes to school safety, I want to take a, a point, this is a, a national issue. Since the tragedy in Parkland, it has really caused a lot of us to really, you know, wake up a little bit more and determine what do we need to do differently in terms of safety and security. And I want to take a, a big point of, of privilege to say a big thank you to Sheriff Kathy, who's in the room. I told our SROs when we had our SRO banquet, I've never worked in a system that has the kind of partnership and relationship that the school system does with the sheriff's office and with the City of Monroe PD. Sheriff Kathy and I meet on a regular basis. I want to thank you, Sheriff, for your support of what we're trying to do in terms of social and emotional health. He takes his side of, of this job very seriously, as do I, and my belief is that he and his team are the experts when it comes to physical safety. We have some things in here to look at our facilities, and, but I've told the sheriff, we, we trust you, you do a great job protecting our staff and our students. So Sheriff, thank you to you and your team, and thank you for being here. What we are really focused hard on in the school system is the other aspects of safety, the social, emotional, and mental health safety. There are a lot of individuals that believe that this, this concept of social and emotional health is a concept and an issue in your communities where you have a lot of poverty. And a principal has told me, and I can't think of a better way to say it, this idea of mental health in our, in our children, it has no zip code. It is in every school. We have children in crisis every single day. We've developed a three-year phase-in plan. Year one is around one and a half million dollars. This plan, over the course of three years, will ensure that every single cluster of schools has access to additional counselors, social workers, and mental health therapists. We also have a, a proposal in this for next year to hire a lead counselor. We have two lead nurses that do training, support for all of our school-based nurses. We don't have a lead counselor. That counselor would be a school-based position. It would, it would be funded through our central services, but it would actually, that position would live in a school with a caseload, but would provide primarily a lot of training and support for our high school counselors for next year. We also have the need for a lead social worker. This one is not a new position. This one would be an allocation of a stipend to extend a current social worker's contract by a month and a half so that he or she is year-round. We also have the need to provide training to our, our teachers around these concepts. I know that when I went through Elon University as an undergrad to become a teacher, I never once took a course on mental health. Our teachers do not know what are the red flags or the warning signs when kids come to school in crisis. And so our idea is to provide some additional training in those areas this summer. And finally, from a facility standpoint, we need to shore up some inequities in our school system when it comes to facilities on this issue. We have, in some of our schools, we have a door camera. When you walk up to the front door and you press a button, and a clerk or someone in the office has to, has to click a trigger to let you in. In some schools, we don't have that. In some schools, we have a visitor check-in system, much like you have here at the Government Center, where you have to show your license, they scan it, and they print out a visitor badge for you. In some of our schools, we don't have that. So we like to have those two aspects as well-funded to really help with the physical and safety end from a facility standpoint. We also want to invest heavily in our, in our employees. We know that we're going to have some salary increases at the state level, which means we need to match those here locally. And I'm not going to go through all the different percentages, but you can see, the plan is to invest in our employees, both non-certified and certified, on the local end to ensure that whatever the state gives as a, as an increase, we match that here locally. We also are doing a compensation study to look at groups of employees that are not up to market. One of those groups of employees is our skilled labor workforce, are those that do capital work, carpentry, masonry, all of your skilled labor, there's funding recommended to go to those salaries to increase those to become competitive with the region. We launched this year a wonderful partnership with Wingate University to have aspiring administrators and current teacher assistants who want to become teachers, and we have funding and recommending funding in the budget to help offset their tuition so that they can come back and work with us. They would have to sign an agreement, much like I did when I was a North Carolina Teaching Fellow, that says you must work as a teacher or as a principal or assistant principal for a minimum of two to four years to quote-unquote "pay back" that stipend, but that will help them tremendously. And then currently, we have really taken a hard look at our beginning teachers. The state of North Carolina defines a beginning teacher as years zero through three, and that's like, we have a gap right now in terms of our beginning teacher support. We do a pretty good job as-is, but the need is there, given our turnover and some of our, again, our increases in those that are retiring, to have some more targeted beginning teacher support. So we're requesting two new positions to help with that support, one position for secondary schools and one position for elementary. And finally, organizational improvement. This year, and thank you to our, to both boards who have supported a, a redirect of about three and a half million dollars to go to six focus schools that are in desperate need of more resources. One of those strategies is intensive tutoring in those schools for fourth and seventh grade. That is a model that is really working, we think. Our progress on our benchmark data is increasing, and we like to model that, the same model for ninth grade at Monroe High School and at Forest Hills High School. We also have a recommendation for an increase in transportation budget to provide transportation to our district-wide IB program, which is at Marvin Ridge High School. We have not historically provided that transportation to those who live outside the Marvin Cluster, but from an equity standpoint, the majority of kids in that program are from Marvin Ridge, but we have kids from all over the county that qualify to get in, but have a barrier in terms of transportation. We'd like to, to break that barrier and ensure that we can have buses to do the-
IB is what?
International Backglow.
Sir.
We also need to expand some of our supports with curriculum and learning disabilities at the secondary level, and so there's some curriculum items in here. And then finally, we have launched a new student assignment management tool that will take all of your pencil-paper transfer requests for students and make those electronic. Here is our, what we are projecting in terms of the county appropriation, based on our current penny value and the adjustment, our, what we see is, is a projection of $119 million. That would be an increase from last year. And here is kind of the line-by-line breakdown of, of basically the summary of what I just described in terms of our priorities. In terms of the cost, you can see with redirections, these are identifying areas that we're spending money and redirecting them to other, other aspects of the budget. That's about $2.1 million. In terms of operations, we've got about $399,000 in that line item. The investment comes to 1.9 in terms of what we would invest in our employees, as I described. Here, we, we take account for student growth, particularly in charter schools. You can see the total cost or that we're projecting for any of our program expansion or any of our new initiatives, totals at about $2.2 million. The proposed county appropriation, based on our projections, is $101 million, and then we are projecting an increase in that total appropriation from prior years as about 4.2, again, based on the calculations that we've done. Here you can see the operating budget in, in diagram. The big point here is the overwhelming majority of our funding goes to instructional services and also goes to people, salary benefits in our employees. That's where the large majority of our, of our funds, from an operating standpoint, are Again, you have a copy of our proposed capital budget in front of you as well. There are three major aspects of this capital budget. The first one is facilities, which we are recommending, including our true-up funding, recommending a $14.8 million budget just for facilities, and those are based on identified projects in our buildings. Transportation, we are including, we're equipping our entire fleet with bus cameras. Some of our cameras do not work in our buses, and also, I believe it was two bus lifts for our current Transportation Center. And then technology, the big one here, we are currently under a lease for our teacher and administrator laptops, which, so we have a payment on that for next year, and it is time to replace our grade six through 12 devices as well. We're actually a year behind in that, and that comes to, actually, it says 2.05, it actually is less than that. And Mr. Parker, I can't believe what that-
1.7.
1.7, so that actually has come down. And then finally, on technology, we have a grave need for backup, backup servers and storage, particularly in the event of any kind of disaster recovery. That is an issue that we need to, to really shore up from a technology standpoint. So again, here's the summary. Again, I'm not going to go through every single line, but it shows you the fiscal year 2018 adopted budget and then the proposed appropriation for the following school year. That was it. That was pretty fast. So we, again, open it up for discussion, board to board, or if you have questions for me or for my team, but that is currently where we are. Now, our, we had a board workshop two days ago, two days ago, and there are some additional items that our board has requested that they can speak to or I can speak to. We will be having another finance committee meeting on Monday, and then the final budget recommendation will go to the full board on Tuesday at our board meeting.
We've asked staff to go back and look at a couple of things and come to us for additional things that we would have to work on how it fits into the budget.
Can I ask you clarification, please? What's certified staff, and are they housed throughout schools or housed just at central office? What's-
Certified staff usually means staff that require a license to do their job, teachers, counselors, principals, assistant principals, nurses, classified staff or staff that do not.
That's your non-certified staff, yeah?
Yes, sir. And I would say, Dr. Barnes, if I correct me if I'm wrong, the overwhelming majority of our certified staff would be in schools.
Yes.
We have about 2,900, almost 3,000 certified staff and about 2,000 non-certified staff.
Just as a general comment, this budget is based off of the actual school tax rate from last year, which I believe was reduced 1.2 pennies from submitted. So we have used that figure as a baseline for this year's, and the growth you see is based on the county's projected revenue growth from that same school tax rate. It's not a, we're not requesting a tax rate increase. It is flat from last year.
You, in your presentation, you spoke numerous times in equity, and, and I agree with that. There are problems that's been in the school for decades, and I want to ask you to address that too. I know you know what I'm talking about, we've talked about it on the board meeting, and that's banning junior ROTC. There's no support for it.
We raised that at our board workshop.
I heard you did, and, but I'd ask you to include it in this budget, fix that problem that's been, because if you look at, those individuals are generally high performers, so they clearly are, should be entitled to support as much as any other athlete or whatever. So I'll ask that you-
We're working on that.
-come back to us, come back to us and fix a problem. You'll, you'll be someone that's fixed problems they couldn't fix for the last 34 years.
We're working on that, Commissioner, and, and I'll tell you, what we are looking at as an idea is a, just a concept. When it comes to things like ban uniforms, is a rotating basis so that once a year, we have a schedule where we rotate and replace uniforms, possible instruments, and also transportation, an adjustment-
Transportation is huge.
-for, for buses. And so we are going to come back to our finance committee on Monday with figures on that.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. You'll be a hero to a lot of people.
Mr. Rush has a question.
Thank you. The SROs, what kind of, I guess, like if there's fight in the schools, SRO involved, if there's drugs found in the schools, SROs are involved, what kind of things do they handle? What are you looking for, for them to handle?
Well, this, our budget is not asking for additional SROs. We, I can tell you what they handle now, but I don't have a figure for, for additional SROs. But they do a lot, a lot of what you just talked about, but to be honest with you, the, and Sheriff Kathy can speak to this, the SROs are very much viewed not just as, you know, security. I think Ms. Heintal has said this before, and I agree. Our SROs, particularly in the high school level, are beloved, and students go to them for a lot of different things, including counseling and advice and help, and they're beloved in our schools. And so they, they don't just handle the altercation aspect or investigations, they do a lot of the, that, that social and emotional piece as well.
A lot of instances, they provide a good role model.
And they're around the building the entire day, so the kids get used to them and they go to them for assistance with a lot of different things. It's an amazing relationship. With that said, we have them in our middle schools and high schools, so what our discussions have been is that we do not have them in our 30 elementary schools. So that, that has been something we've been talking, you know, as a board and with Sheriff Kathy over the past couple of months, you know, could we do all 30 or what could we do? So that's something we've definitely been in communication with him about.
I have a question for Cam, and as Stoney and Kathy both say it, sometimes it don't come out right, but if I ever wrote a book, it would be called Crumbs and Low-Hanging Fruit. The money we had to give back last year for our bond payments, seems like maybe there would be some leftover there.
I guess, from my perspective.
Well, I would assume we were making an annual payment, but we really haven't got it out of the cranks yet.
The first tranche of funding for the debt is an issue, so that first payment is coming up, and then as a, we need to keep the tax rate as low as possible. There's a sinking fund that's being built up, so there's a debt fund separate and above the school's budgetary fund or the county's general fund.
Well, I guess what I'm really talking about is when that first payment comes up, with what we have put in that account, what we give up last year, is there going to be any leftover?
I think at that time, once all the debt is issued, which will be in a couple of years, the board will put it up in the board as to what to do with that tax rate as that debt pays off over time. So there's not any surplus in that fund at this point, that's a true fact.
Well, does the 3.09, the tax rate for the bond, does that have true-up funding to it as well? Because if you, if people pay more, so if we have true-up funding for our tax rate of 44.51, whatever it is, the 3.09 that was for the, the bond debt for both the school system, SPCC and the library, did that have additional money, it had additional money coming in above what you thought?
The, the debt fund's a little different than the operating funds from the perspective of, we haven't issued the second tranche of funding yet, our debt, so all the funding-
So the whole bond's not in place, too?
So the whole bond's not been issued. So once that gets settled out and we get to fix payments of that, then it'll be a decision of the board as to what happens to that tax rate. Now, the modeling we have done and working with the board is that as that tax rate runs off, or as those debt payments decline over time, that tax rate will continue to decline also.
When do you anticipate all the bonds being issued?
Probably the 2020, 2021 timeframe.
Even though we'll have already undertaken-
The first tranche of funding was for the schools, so the first half, 50 million. Here we take 54 million, has already been issued, so all of the schools funding has been issued and applied. There's funding for SPCC and the funding for the library, those, those issues haven't occurred yet.
They're not as far along in their construction time range.
Right. They're still planning, site planning, so there's a little bit of planning money, site acquisition, that kind of funding appropriated to those, so that won't actually settle out for a few more years.
Okay, I have another question, because when we had, we had talked about asking for true-up money earlier, and I voted against it, because I understand it's not policyable. But I would like to see the board change the true-up funding to February or March, because what happened this year, we needed funds in place, and it would be for a capital improvement. In other words, if we know we're going to get it, this was stuff that came up on the facilities meeting, and in other words, we're going to spell it out to you where it's going, it's always going to go just to capital, but with schooling in the first of June and the budget not going into effect until July 1, and as I understand it, we can't bid a job until we have the money in hand. So it seems like to me it would be expeditious in the future to change policy to where the true-up money comes, maybe February or March, so that facilities can get a head start on some of their building.
Well, I think, and it's obviously a board policy, the challenge in doing that is that the board uses that funding in conjunction with the committed tax rate to fund your capital program. So for instance, if you take 3 million in February, let's say, then you're funding for the following or upcoming year, there'd be a $3 million gap then in the upcoming year. So it's out of cycle with what the statute would give us and those things. So the board has always included that as part of their annual funding, and it's certainly a board policy decision, but our recommendation to the board for that reason is to ensure that we have a continuous ongoing funding every year and are able to meet your funding needs versus jumping in mid-year and taking, necessarily reducing the amount of funding available in the upcoming budget cycle.
It's consistent with how we handle even our county funds as it relates to if we collect more in tax dollars than we estimated, and that is so that we can look at the whole picture holistically, so that at budget time is the one time that my board is able to look at everything within county departments and say, this is where we believe the priorities are, this is where we believe funds need to be allocated, and that's kind of the same philosophy, at least up until this point in time, as Jeff said, the board can make a differentiation, should, should they so choose, but it's, it's been with that same philosophy, which is, when you come to us with your annual budget, we then see what all your needs are versus, you may have some needs here and here, versus seeing any drips and drabs, I guess is the best way to explain it.
Well, it's my understanding, though, where the county agencies get true-up funding with us.
Well, ours is not called true-up funding, and it's really not true-up funding. I mean, from a historical perspective, the Board of Education never agreed to a funding formula. The Board of County Commissioners made a decision a number of years ago to bifurcate the tax rate. They are under no legal obligation to provide that additional funds to you. It has been their policy to provide those funds to you as part of your annual budget process. We don't do it by department, but if we collect more monies than we anticipated, then it goes into our fund balance and our reserves, and then as part of our overall budget allocation, our board considers that when we're looking at one-time expenditures, similar to the same process that go through when they consider the school board's budget.
Well, maybe we can look at that and we can-
But that's different than, than what you do with the bond. If you get more taxes than you thought you were going to do with the 3.09, that goes into a separate budget.
That is, that is different.
Right. The capital policy related to debt and sinking fund would dictate at this point, of course, it's a board policy, is that that tax rate trails off as the debt trails off.
Gotcha.
Which is, as you mentioned, absolutely.
And let me point out something else, we always provide y'all a five-year plan, so- yet, so in February, Ms. Heintal pretty much has her next year of capital requirements, would that not move up one year?
Moves up one year, but to be fair, it changes because other things have popped up and they get moved up.
Well, the emergencies is really what I'm asking for.
But they may not be, we may have thought that we were going to have to replace a chiller, and Mark is better at this than me, but we may have thought we would need to replace a chiller on a school in year four and it started to fail faster than we thought it was going to fail. So if, if we hear from the maintenance staff that does the HVAC that it's failing faster, we move it up. So no, it's, it's a con, the five-year plan, as you guys have seen, is a constantly changing document. Would you disagree with that?
No, that's correct.
Mr. Rushing. What I'm hearing and understanding is that basically it's not a function of that you get the money, it's, it's the timing of getting the money.
Exactly.
When the kids are at school, right.
Because you have to do your projects like that and the kids are not there.
Some projects require, the school would be empty, yeah.
So maybe, you know, maybe there's even a way to figure out, I, I don't know how we do it without passing in the budget unless we do something ahead of time, but um, you know, having a, do you have monies that you have in reserve for emergencies and maybe budget for that, so what kind of, what kind of money are you talking about?
It's not, we're not, I don't think we're typically talking about emergencies, we're talking about stuff that we have planned, like a chiller, to replace a chiller that's coming up and it would be good if once it's been determined that we need to replace the chiller, it's the best time to do stuff, especially with ventilation and everything in the ceilings of the school, it's best to do it over the summer when those students are present in the school. So when things change during the school year and we try to, and, and something gets brought up that needs to be done over the summer that wasn't on the current fiscal year's thing because we're, we're moving it up because it failed quicker than we thought, it's the ability to get it done over that summer project time.
The July budget is a, is a month late.
Is a month late for us, right.
They're running off on end.
Right, because our school year ends on June eighth, but yet the budget, and, and I'm not saying that's your fault, it's the reality that we live with and I think that that's what we're talking about.
That's right, thank you, Mr. Rushing, you did say what I was trying to say.
Mr. Hales.
I uh, I think it's a very logical approach and I understand their policy, I guess I'd ask Jeff, if, if you had to have her be able to commit funds, can the county do that for you in lieu of, and it comes out of next year's budget? We ought to be able to work out a way that you can make those contracts in that time to start the work on June ninth, so you can get it accomplished during the summer. I think the board commissioners needs to, and our staff need to work with y'all to come up with a plan to be able to sell that, it's come up every year since I've been a commissioner. So we can fix that, policy can fix that, so I'd suggest that we work together to come up with it.
It's just that those ten weeks over the summer that we have to try to get some projects done is kind of tight for us on some projects, but.
Actually, it's all coming out of the same checkbook.
Right. If everything will break down on schedule, we'll never know.
And I guess to answer the question that you asked is yes, we have a fund balance for rainy day funds, for the bond, if there's issues with the bond and the projects that we have on the bond and things like that. So if we know we're getting, I guess we've, we've had this discussion, a few of us, if we use that money and you, and we ask you for that, so let's say there's a project that's a million and a half and if we have a million and a half in our fund balance, can we get the project started, bid it out, and then if there's any money that we've spent before you've approved the budget, can you re, I don't know what the words you want to be. Reimburse us or replenish or whatever, if that's the project that's chosen for that.
Advance us.
Advance, I don't know what the word is, or we advance ourselves and you replenish the account. Jeff, we are trying to save our fund balance to see where we are with the fifty-four million dollar bond project.
Yes.
Um, you know, Sun Valley's an old school, so we want to make sure we have a little bit of money so if there's surprises and just to have money if there's a chiller or something that goes out and we don't have any money in our capital funds for that current year.
What time of the year, would you say at the end of the first quarter of the year? You have a pretty good handle on what we're looking at as far as, again, I'll use the term true-up, uh, funding for that fiscal year, in other words, by, by March or so, you have, you have a pretty good feel for how much our, our true-up's going to work out to be?
Normally what we do is we would use what our audited financial statements provide for us as the unassigned fund balance, so it, once our audited financials are completely delivered, the board is November, December, and that dictates then the amount available for the upcoming budget cycles, available funds in the school's budgetary fund.
Okay, we do appreciate the times that we've come to you and been able to move some money around when things come up, you've been great about that, so that's helpful. It's just the bigger projects that come up for the summertime.
I have a question, um, and this is an area that, that has concerned me for a long time, not, not relative to the schools, but relative to our state and to our nation, and that is the issue of mental health. It seems like, you know, every time we have a tragedy, an incident, then suddenly everybody gets concerned about the issue and, you know, as the, as a former friend of mine used to say, let's do something if it's wrong. So I guess my question is, can you, can you elaborate a little bit more if you, I certainly want to support every effort to provide mental health assistance to young people. Is it, is, is this the best plan? I know we have, and I've talked to Michelle Laxer-Some about this, with regard, are there opportunities to partner with Health and Human Services in an effort to make sure that we, we don't just do something, we do something well and do it right, so.
Drew, why don't you handle that and talk about some of the nuances of, that you discussed with us as far as specifics for.
And I think ratios are important too, like where we are and where we should or could be as far as what our ratios, how far off we are.
What we have now. So on this particular issue, what I'll say is, in, in this current school year, I mentioned our strategy to fund tutors in these six, what we call focus schools, they're schools that, that need improvement. The additional funding that we have put in place this year have been to fund in the elementary schools, a mental health therapist or a social worker, as well as in the two middle schools, a social worker and a mental health therapist that have just been dedicated to those schools. As I've met with every faculty of these six schools and asked them, what has been the biggest benefit in terms of this, the strategies, they've all commented that that effort has been the number one best thing we have done to date for the children in those schools. And that's primarily because we have students that come to us that are in trauma, that are coming from households that, that have, sometimes have a lack of support and are coming from areas of mental health, depression, anxiety, et cetera. And so this plan is basically designed to be much more proactive as opposed to reactive. And if we can identify, you know, students that are in crisis or in trouble, very well on in, in their lifetime, that will prevent other agencies like Health and Human Services from having to intervene. So we view this as a very proactive plan to provide supports. Currently, if you take those six schools and set them aside, for the other, say forty thousand students, we have three social workers that are UCSF employees for forty thousand students. And, and I'll tell you, and I'll just, we'll be honest with you, I have a superintendent's advisory council of kids, high school kids, there's five or six from every, every high school, and this year I've asked for their feedback throughout the year on this issue. And the best way I can say it is, when I asked them, of all the things that you feel like you needed more assistance with when you were in elementary, middle or high school, was it academics, was it this social emotional piece, was it counseling support, they unanimously said, this is the issue that they need help with. That they have fantastic teachers, but we don't have the people and, and a lot of cases where our kids can access to talk with. Our, if you look at some of our current counselor-to-student ratios, the National Counseling Association recommends a ratio of one to about two hundred and seventy. And one, in our largest high school, which is Porter Ridge, our counselor-to-student ratio is well above one to four hundred and in some cases, one to five hundred. And so these are the kinds of gaps, I recognized this as an issue last year, which is why we put the funding and the recommendation into funding for these six focus schools, because the one thing I've learned about school improvement in my tenure, in my, in my career, we really do a great job with academic supports, but we rarely talk about wraparound services. And these six schools have really served as a model and a pilot to look at expansion for the whole county and we've been very successful there. So I do believe we could partner much differently and much better with DSS and Health and Human Services. I think we have an opportunity to create more alignment, to be honest with you. There are differences between a school social worker and a, a Department of Social Service social worker. A school social worker has different certifications, different licensers, different training, different staff development they have to go through and are intended, again, to be much more proactive. What I've found in most, most cases with, with a Health and Human Services agency is, but when, when HHS intervenes, they're intervening for a particular reason. That's usually, in, in most cases, because of a neglect or a domestic family issue, not always, but in, in most cases. Our goal with this plan is to be proactive so that, that never even has to happen. So that's kind of where we are with this plan. Is it perfect? No, but our principals and teachers have said, anything that the county will support in terms of expanding these resources will be appreciated.
Mr. Hales.
Yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with fourteen counties commissioners, had a conference yesterday, the subject came up. It's, it's a problem we have across the state right now. I would ask and appreciate your, your comments about the sheriff and the way he handles things, you know, he has the expertise in law enforcement, he provides that and does an outstanding job. I'd ask that you consider looking at maybe DHS that's supporting individuals that are dedicated to schools. One thing it does offer is it offers a base for them to work out of and, and so it might be, they might have a better support group overall instead of being an island and a thing. That's just something that I'd like for us to consider, there might be some economic savings there and also may, you know, you may have fourteen counselors that you need and you have a situation where you need sixteen or eighteen and you've got to pull back DHS that you can, you can rely on, so just consider, it's all I ask.
Mr. Rushing and then Dennis, I think, have a comment.
And I appreciate this too, thank you Jerry for that suggestion because we're fortunate to have Sheriff Kathy here with us. He and I were in a meeting the other day where we were discussing the problems that he faces, so I think that this is a law enforcement, a county issue, it's a school issue and we're all affected by it. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we talk about these issues and, and how we can help keep kids from getting into worse shape than they are. Eddie, if you wouldn't mind, I know, I know, I know you're probably not ready to speak on it, but I think you know the issue, you know, maybe tell what you told us about how we have to haul people all over the state for mental health issues and the costs to the county.
No, I don't mind, you know, it's not just our county, but it's our state, mental health crisis across the state. It's not our school system, it's everything in the state, but we haul involuntary commitments across the state daily and three or four a day. Last year, we haul involuntary commitments or commitments that the, some of the family, husband, wife, father, mother have taken them somewhere or we bring them somewhere to get involuntary committee for treatment. We traveled all across the state, it doesn't mean in our county, Mecklenburg doesn't take anything except Mecklenburg and it's unusual case. And we transported eight hundred and seventy people last year and it's usually for a three-day visit. If you know anybody that's ever needed that treatment, you know that three days is just a waste of everybody's time. You can't start the medication in three days, you can't get treatment in three days. We, last year committed one person fourteen times. We've got vans offered on the road every day, all day long, all night, traveling across the state. And I, I, I agree that the school system is a complex thing and it, but it's got to start, treatment's got to stop somewhere and we don't have it, there's, I don't, there's no sky in Union County, there's therapy sessions, but there's really very little in Union County. I think the hospital is creating twelve beds there to just house involuntary commitments now. So if we were taking up their emergency room and look in our schools, I think it's the same way in the schools, the kids don't have it, the parents don't have anywhere to turn, the kids don't have anywhere to turn. And you're right, they have turned our school resource off. And to be honest with you, we think our school resource recognizes a lot of these issues, a lot of the things that's going on with kids, they get to know them, they get to train with them, they get to walk up and down those halls. It's a, it's a learning experience for them. If I could tell you what these school resource officers do for those families that need help and take up food and take up clothing and take up things, it's pretty amazing what they do on a day-to-day basis in their school, because they don't have any, the kids don't have any place else to turn. Does that hit you a little bit?
Yes, sir, and I, you know, I would ask that maybe school staff work with our staff and work with the sheriff's department, that maybe come up with some ideas that work together that we're not duplicating or doing three times the effort, that maybe together we can get, you guys can come up with a plan to, you know, whole county approach instead of just a school approach versus law enforcement approach versus county approach. And, you know, I think we need to make a motion on that tonight, but maybe if staff become some kind of ideas on how to do that.
Do you know?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, I heard you talk about that Monday night Jerry and I totally agreed with it when I heard that we should look at social services, but then I, I went back to my years of teaching and then we had a budget workshop Tuesday afternoon and we talked about it and my thinking process just kept evolving. I called it, I know I had a lot of kids when I taught that had toxic environments at home and my fear after thinking it through, I don't know if DHS social workers can get there quick enough. I do, I didn't think we needed them, but I do see now that our social workers in the same building with the teacher could be notified and go out there that day or the next day. We're not going to get into the DHS business and I told Dr. Hulahan, we will need to have a close alliance with them. We're really a first responder, will be a first responder to a problem that exists and once we get it identified, y'all would, DHS would, we'd turn it over to them, but that teacher is the first, the scout that sees what's happening.
I agree, it changes. I think just like they get to know the safety resource officers and they do act like, that they go to them for everything because they, they see them in the building and they get to know them and they're around, I think we want the same thing with our social workers and our mental health workers, to be in the schools so that they get to know them and feel more comfortable approaching them and things like that.
And accessibility level for our kids.
Yes, exactly.
Because a lot of our kids, and I'm speaking as a mother of a high school student, that if my son goes to the guidance counselor, mostly it's for, okay, I'm planning out my schedule for next year for college, my pathway, what do I need to take, blah, blah, blah. It, it is, and so that's what our kids see mostly as our guidance counselors for, not that they're not available, at least in my. Not that they're not available, at least in my personal view of it. They're available for it, but it's not as accessible for some kids to go to those guidance counselors, because they're on track to think, okay, I'm supposed to go to them to see, what path do I need to take to get into college? Do I need to go ahead and take these college classes my senior year, or be more than official to wait till I actually get in college? Do I need to do dual enrollment? It's more college level that they are trained to go to these counselors at our school versus an emotional need. And as we know, what happened in Piedmont this past week, if it would have saved that kid's life, it would have been worth every dime we spent. Every dime we spent to save that one boy.
Are we talking, are you talking counselor as opposed to a mental health worker?
Well, if they have access to them in the school. If they're there in the schools, just like our SROs.
Oh, I agree.
Then, then if it's, you know, it's the front line. It's the front line for our kids. And if they have more availability to it, and they have more exposure to it, they're more likely to go and speak to someone about it. And not a parent, because sometimes the kids don't feel comfortable speaking to a parent. If it's a third party, that's going to be neutral and help these kids, not necessarily in gun violence, but if that helps, too great. But there's a lot of depression going around. I mean, and we've seen a huge increase in that over the years, of kids that need, you know, treatment for depression, anxiety, et cetera. We see it all the time now. And if we can help these kids out, then it's going to be worth every dime we spend. Every dime we spend. And as a parent, put yourself in that parent's position with a child with anxiety, depression. Would you not want that at your school for your child?
And we, and we need staff, like Mrs. Hammonds is explaining. You know, our current guidance counselors are overwhelmed with, you know, class changes, helping, helping with enrollment for the next spring or the next fall. And they may not be able, we need someone that is, you know, dedicated to the emotional learning aspects, as opposed to one person having to switch each level. This hour, I'm only going to do college transcripts. The next hour, I'm going to, you know, help, you know, rearrange someone's class schedule. And, and have someone that is completely dedicated to mental health and helping a student in crisis.
And what our children face is completely different than what we faced when we were in school. If you just look at the social aspect of social media, it's horrendous. It's absolutely horrendous. And the pressure that these kids face is 10 times, 100 times greater than what we face and what our kids face.
And the pressure to get into college is, is off the chart different than, you know, 10, 20 years ago. The pressure is very, very high for these kids socially, academically, athletics, at home, peers, you name it. The pressure is 1,000 times worse than I've, I've ever seen it.
We also discussed at our meeting Tuesday, that even the lead counselor, lead social worker positions, it is our intent that these people be in the school. We make it very clear, we are not creating central office, middle management positions. These are people who are out there. School-based, fill in if needed, on the front line, making sure our policies and procedures are consistent and followed, but they are out there. They're not sitting behind a desk somewhere, just kind of, you know, not, and somewhat detached from the actual school activity. We made that very clear. These people are going to be in there pitching in.
Are we utilizing South Providence to the full benefit of our full social?
We are currently evaluating South Providence. We have asked for a third party to come in and take a look at how, number one, South Providence has been positioned historically, and number two, the different elements. South Providence has multiple different programs in that school. We have had a decrease in the number of kids that have been going to South Providence this year, mostly because we have been working on a thorough review, particularly at the high school level, on our policies and procedures that relate to admission, reason for sending a child there, and the reentry plan back into the school. So, that is currently under evaluation.
Policy committee is also looking at discipline and discipline into South Providence as well, to make sure that that's still happening. I do believe with all this, discipline has to go hand in hand with what we're doing.
How many counselors? We have several counselors at, counselors at South Providence?
We have two.
For how many students?
It changes on a daily basis.
I understand, but.
Less than 100.
Okay, thank you.
It's less than 50. Isn't it less than 50 right now?
What's the capacity of South Providence?
108.
There's about 62 there right now.
I think the capacity is 100.
But actual students on.
Last year, I believe, on average, we had 80. This year, on average, we're at 60.
And that's middle and high.
But quite honestly, these social workers could pay huge results immediately, because when I taught, the best students I had were the ones that would come to school hungry, because I would buy them food, and they just bought into this. I mean, it's, and the social workers, and turn it over to DHS, is to make sure that these families that are getting local food assistance, they spend the money on food and all the other things.
Well, my point, Sheriff Kathy said it, I believed it for a long time, it's a statewide crisis, not just in our schools. And certainly, it has been brought to our attention, unfortunately, with past events. And I think it's an opportune time, nothing will hurt us to sit down together. And explore some creative ways, maybe some ways to do things differently. And now's the time.
I agree.
So. I have a couple. I hate to, I hate to be the elephant in the room, we're sitting beside the elephant in the room, but.
Now, watch what you say.
Well, what am I to say?
And, and some of this is the result of some of your meetings, and others is, of course, the wonderful grapevine, you know. There was something relative to some funds that you came across, five to $6 million. Would you care to elaborate with the boards together, so we understand fully what that is and where it is and that kind of thing?
From my understanding, and Mr. Covington, our CFO, can I comment on this? From my understanding, based on previous administration and the manner in which our financials, financials were coded in different budget strings, there have been a series of, of funds, for lack of a better word, that have gone unspent. And this is a result of lapsed salaries and other kinds of issues. It is nothing illegal, it's nothing unethical, it's just the manner in which the finance department has coded and allotted funds. And over time, those funds have accumulated. And when you asked about our fund balance as a result, that it's not new money in terms of what you all allocated to the school system in years past, but as Mr. Covington, our new CFO, has come in, and as he's evaluated the extent in which we code different by objects, and we put funds into different streams, he has discovered that we have the funds available in, as Jeff would say, an unassigned fund balance.
I think, Drew, he's referring to fines and forfeitures and the alcohol tax fund.
Those are two sources of the revenue that help make up the total fund balance. But a lot of it came from, there was a set aside in, I think, last year or the year before, for computers, that we ended up, not computers, charter school, that we ended up using current year dollars instead of fund balance to pay for. And so, when you put all that into your financial statements, you take in all your revenue, take out all your expenses, what was left was the 5.7 million unassigned.
And we have not asked to, to spend that money.
And that's what we were talking about earlier, when we said we're setting that aside still to see what has to be done with the 54 million in bond projects, if we have any issues.
So, I, so I fully understand, you keep talking about fund balance, and I'll just throw out a figure. So, do you, do you have a $5 million fund balance, and then you found another $5 million? So, you have $10 million.
One dollar, 5.7 million.
5.7 million.
So, you didn't have a fund balance before you came across those funds?
No, I think last year, financial, the fund balance was $1,000.
State and federal money, we have to revert back. There's no such thing as a fund balance for that. And we can assure you that local monies get, get spent in the appropriate places.
And Mr. Covington, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you came to us with this information, I think this, this 5.7 million was over several years.
Many years.
Many years. It wasn't a one-year discovery or savings.
I sort of understand.
It was over many, many years that had been under different codes, and he pulled it all together, you know, consolidated the coding.
And my only point is, we, and I made this comment the other evening, but it's always a challenge chasing scarce dollars on both sides of the fence, and so, we need to know wherever dollar is and use it as wide as we can, both at the county level and at school.
Well, we had a discussion several months ago in the finance committee. Where should we set, using that fund balance of that fund? How much should we set aside for the true emergency that we can dip into before we have to come to you folks? And the thought process was, as Kathy said, we need to hold off and see if there are any of the bond projects that have unforeseen costs, running to asbestos, who knows what? With construction costs continuing to escalate and the great economy, we felt like it was important to have that as a, as a option in case of need on those bond projects. And before we decide upon an actual reserve, reserve requirement moving forward, and then we could utilize the funds in excess of whatever reserves. I think, Dennis, don't we take in about 850,000 a year?
Yes, but that comes towards the revenue.
And, and most of the schools on the bond are older facilities, so we want to be cautious that you stay within the 54 million, hopefully not have to come and ask you for more, because the bids came in over. So, we're trying to reserve that money to cover any overages or unforeseen projects or things to help fulfill these bond projects. And 5.7 million with seven, you know, seven projects on the bond is not a lot.
But at least we got that much, and we're not standing here.
Asking for. And it was, we did it in open meetings, too, so we talked about it, we talked about it a couple of times, so.
And I'll be honest with you, up until about six months ago, when Mr. Covington did an extensive presentation on that fund, where it comes from, how much we have, and a spreadsheet of the history and use of that fund, that was frankly, a lot of new information to me, and I've been on this board almost four years, because it hasn't been, I don't want to say it's been hidden from, but it hasn't been explained in an entirely clear fashion to make, to us to understand where it came from and what it's been spent on in the past. But now it is, and it's out there, and if, you know, there'll be full disclosure if that money's used for anything.
The night I was, the night I was winning, I pursued it for about 30 minutes, but I couldn't ever pick up a cent, because we had 35 unbudgeted million dollars that first night that Mr. Covington found it for us.
One other elephant, it's a bigger one, but I'm excited to hear about it. Would you, I understand you folks have received a significant grant, several million dollars over several years. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. We, we are very excited about this. We are one of 14 school systems in the nation who have received a three-year, $27 million grant from the Department of Education. And it's, we have an option to extend that by two more years, so that would be five years, 45 million, if we, you know, if our application for continuation gets accepted. These funds are obviously federal funds that must be dedicated to specific schools, and these funds go to all of the schools in the Monroe cluster, as well as all, minus CADA and Early College, I believe, and all of the schools in the Forest Hills cluster. And it's called a teacher and school leader incentive grant. And what the grant does is it asks school systems to identify really innovative, best practices of teaching and leadership that you could pilot for a few years, assess and evaluate, and determine whether or not those practices are scalable or would be applicable for all schools. I'll give you one example. The grant gives allocation for us to hire what are called master teachers. Dr. Kevin Plu at Forest Hills High School has been doing this for about a year or two. And what that means is having a teacher that is a highly effective teacher that doesn't carry a full student caseload. Instead of teaching four periods, he or she may only teach two. And they spend those other two teachers coaching, modeling, doing data analysis, not supervising, but really coaching teachers, working with beginning teachers on improving their instruction. That was a model that was in the grant. All of these 13 schools will have the funds to hire their own master teachers. Now, I don't know how many per school, I can't remember offhand, but that's just one example. Another example is there's incentive funds to give teachers in these schools bonuses for their attendance. If they are coming to school, a certain percentage of the school year, and are on time and meet that attendance, they could be, they could earn extra money. Teachers in these schools are eligible to receive $14,000 more than other teachers in other schools. And these are schools that are all right here in Monroe and in Forest Hills. Because it's federal dollars tied to this, it can only go to supporting our Title I communities, where we have a certain percentage of free and reduced lunch students. And so, that's really what the grant does. It also has some components for leadership development, working with developing our own assistant principals to one-day-be principals. And so, we're really excited about this. On Tuesday night at our board meeting, Dr. John Jones and his team, who's over teaching and learning, will give an update to our board on where we are year-to-date. And so, we're very excited about this. We'll bring a lot of new practices to teaching to our, to our schools.
Dr. Goulan, is that 14,000 per year?
Yes.
That will bring an immediate result to those schools.
Commissioner Rushing, then Commissioner Hammonds. I remember back in the 90s, that the federal government wanted to put 500,000 new officers on the streets, and they gave communities around the country money to do that. But when the money disappeared, the officers remained. You remember that, too?
That was all time grants.
Should we, I mean, is this something we need to be looking at, that when the grant runs out, as a continued program?
What the grant asks us to do is to identify, we have to do a yearly evaluation. What they ask us to do in year three is to, is to let the Department of Ed know, and we would be happy to let both boards know, of all the different innovative practices you put into place, which are the ones that are getting results, and which are the ones that are scalable across other schools. And so, I do believe that we are going to be in a position in a few years to have to answer those two questions. And in some cases, the reason why they extend this for two more years is because you might not have enough data to support it either one way or the next. You need a five-year trend. But we will need to come back to that conversation when we get to that point in time.
Because I would be very concerned that we're paying a teacher a good salary on a grant, and then, and then the grant's gone, and the teacher's looking at us like, where's the money that I have?
We ask the same question.
We ask the same question.
Any, any of the employees that are, again, a master teacher is an example, that, that signs up for this, knows going in that this is part of a grant. They have to sign off on that. They, they understand that at the end of three years, there's the potential that that funding could go away. We have, they were required to do that as part of the grant, to make sure that they acknowledge that.
My question is, legislature is looking at a $1.9 billion capital referendum for schools. Have you all anticipated what that effect could have on Union County?
To be honest, what I've been told, and I need to do some more work onto this, is that because of our, the county's level of wealth, the, what I've been told, what I've heard, is that that 1.9 is going to go to a lot of your lower-income counties. There's a tier system that school systems are ranked on. We just last year dropped out of the tier to receive low-wealth funding. So, the last document I got, I did not see Union getting much, if anything, as part of that project.
Yeah, I think what is it, 8.1 billion identified needs?
Yes.
And they're talking about 1.9.
And they're talking about 1.9, just to know how.
Senator Tucker told me last Friday, we had climbed back up into the next tier.
Does that conclude our questions? Are there any board comments on either side?
Well, I'd just like to say, I appreciate, especially Mr. Simpson, your questions today because I've, unfortunately, there have been joint meetings, or even in some cases, no joint meetings, just here's our budget, let's see what, what sticks. But you've had some very good questions. I would much rather be able to address those questions than, than coming up at a later time and not having the opportunity to provide you the information you need to make your decisions. So I think this is, in my almost four years on this board, it is another sign of the progression of the trust between the two boards that we could sit here like this, ask questions, nothing to hide, and full transparency. And I hope you feel like that you'll get the answer when you do ask these questions and not a dodge or we'll get back to you kind of thing. But I appreciate the open dialogue.
We certainly appreciate all the effort you went into your presentation, for your time, and you come and join us, and for all your staff that came along with you.
We're a great team.
Good to have them here as well. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Well, I would like to thank you for, for hosting this meeting tonight, providing dinner for both of our boards to sit and spend some time talking to each other before the meeting. And I would like to wish, as well, a happy birthday. Happy to be a part of that celebration tonight.
I don't know, Jim, of course, you may have enough things all out for drinks.
So it's been a pleasure to be here tonight. And I thank you. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to our board members and to our superintendent. As always, we look forward to working with you and answering any questions between May 0 and May 7th or 8th. Your plan in heaven is over to you well before the 15th deadline. So please let us know if you have any questions. And this time I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, where are you?